For a fire season update. I'll let you bring up to whatever you want or however you want to do your presentation.
Alright, so Commissioners of Berry Shulmer, Interagency Fire Staff Officer for Fremont and Lakeview District BLM. I think we'll start off with Clint Albertson, our Interagency Fire Planner. He's going to give you a fire season update on our weather predictions.
Good morning, guys.
Good morning.
There's a saying that escapes me right now about trying to predict weather. So I do obviously put a grain of salt, but so that's a starting point for us. Anyway, the first page you're looking at is the drought monitor and the drought outlook. And we're well aware that we've had a number of years of drought and we've had some good precipitation that has taken us out of that. As far as the Northwest, well, I'm going to zero in on that. Quite a bit of the West has had some good precip and been removed out of drought status. And the definitely, the definite notable exception is the Northwest corner, Pacific Northwest, kind of zeroed in, especially on that Olympic Peninsula. They're looking forward to some difficult times ahead potentially. And it's also looking to creep down into, you can already see part of it into Northwest Oregon, but continuing to creep even further down into Western Oregon is kind of where they're at as far as expectations. So next, on the next page, we see some reds and blues and greens and oranges. But the top tier is a basically a month outlook. And the bottom tier is a three-month outlook, basically our fire season. So somewhat fresh is basically what they're saying on the left is a temperature anomaly is they're expecting increased chances of us being warmer than usual for the next month. And then on the right-hand side, that's precipitation. They're expecting us to be wetter than than usual for this time of year. On that bottom tier, for the remainder of the summer, looking to stay warmer than usual, which that comes to pass was not going well for for fire season. And then also you'll see there on that lower right that for our area, we're about equal chances, that's what that EC is. But off to our east is greater than average chance of precipitation. The way I would look at that in a short version of everything we just said there is, I guess if I did, I do have to do a rusty nickel guess on stuff as I would put this as a lightning summer. Basically, that green bullseye to me is setting up for some monsunal activity and that drives and brings moisture into our area. And then when we have heat to the west of us and moisture to the east and bringing those two together, we're going to typically get lightning. And we've actually more years than not in the last number of years have less than average light. So that will definitely keep the fires in business if that helps us keep that. Do you guys have any questions or thoughts to this point?
With the moisture in the woods right now, is that going to help us a little bit or?
Okay, so, good question. Right now, what we're looking at, since we've already dried out, are basically our lower elevations. I expect us, and we've seen it already, some fire activity that will pretty rapidly go into what we would consider a full fire season at the lower elevations. But with the excellent snowpack that we have had, it'll be a while before the upper elevations that will go into fire season. It's a kind of a story of two different landscapes. But we'll get into July and it'll be on for for all of our areas. That's what I'm looking at there. And then on the next page, squiggly lines and charts. So a couple of key indicators that we monitor, and we monitor a number of them, but just trying to keep things pretty simple. A thousand-hour fuel moisture, if you look on that left-hand side, on that Y-axis, that vertical axis, it says thousand-hour fuel moisture. And what we're looking at is how dry our larger fuels are. And this is modeled, but we also have a monitoring program to true that out. But from a modeling standpoint, you can see following that blue line, which is the 2019, is that we're above average for that, those bigger fuels and moisture. So that's a good thing. They're wetter than average. And you can see we came down and we just about hit the average line, got some more precip and a bump back up. So all that's good for the time being. Then on the right-hand side, our main fire danger rating index that we use is energy release component. And you can see again as an indicator of what our winter was, we generally been below average and we've got right average and now we're just just above. All of the outlook for the next week is that will just trend somewhat down and stay stay at average. Do you guys have any questions or if I didn't explain something?
What is the SIG? I have to.
Oh, sure, sure. Good, good question. Thank you. So we we maintain and monitor a network of weather stations out in forests. Like, we're looking at twenty stations from desert in Nevada clear to Crater Lake and beyond. And what we do instead of looking, when we're trying to look at the big picture like we're doing right here, instead of looking at individual stations, we'll bring an amalgamation of stations together and average those out. And SIG means Special Interest Group. So that just means, in this case, it's four different stations. Let's see, the Curver is a station, there's one at Chillicooy, and then Summit right up behind the ski hill is one, and then what's the other one?
Comfort Park?
Nope. Yeah, we got a pileup. And we're watching every day.
Stronger stuff. Out of this area?
Yep, right out of this area. Thank you. Well said. So then this brings us to a product that's put out by our National Interagency Coordination Center in coordination with our Regional Coordination Centers. But they try to do their best guess at what they call a significant wildland fire potential outlook. And that is large fires. It's not trying to estimate how many small fires we're going to have, which I'll say and overiterate. I guess if I had to say my expectation is, is we'll be above average in number of fires that you're just expecting lightning. I wouldn't necessarily prognosticate for our area right now the severity, you know, if we're going to have large fires. I'm sure we'll have one, but for our area specifically, and it indicates here what's here in front of you, that we're basically at that equal chances. Nothing extenuating or out of the ordinary for our area. But you can see, again, they're looking pretty hard on that west side of Oregon. And as we know, that part of the world, it's hard to get in and get at some of those fires. So they tend to get them and keep them for a while, those large fires. And so this goes through June, July, August, and September. And things will change as we go forward. We've got grass out on the desert. We haven't had a desert year in a while, so that's something we're always keeping an eye on. Those are my thoughts. Do you guys have any questions or any thoughts from the peanut gallery?
Of course, I got a couple. The only thing I would add is, think back, this year's lined up very similar to 2017. And so as far as snowpack and the winter goes, a couple things with that. We run into problems either when we're in a drought and have really dry fuels and get fuels-driven fires, or we get a whole bunch of lightning and we're overwhelmed by the number of starts. Last year was a fuels year because we were in the drought, large fires like Watson Creek. Year before that, 2017, we had a number of large fires, but they were relatively small, you know, twelve hundred acres, a thousand acres, and that was just because overwhelmed by the number of starts. Think back, one of the same storms, Crane Creek, Devil's Lake, Jade Fire, all at the same time that we're trying to go. They weren't huge fires for this area, but they were definitely significant fires that took some time to put down. Also, we're going from, the last few years, we've been going from drought years to good winters, no drought, to drought year, and then again, good winters and no drought. That still may be alright for some of the fuels, but when you talk about the timber, that moisture just isn't really there deep down for those trees to recover fully from the last several years of drought effect. So I imagine the light fuel moisture will drop from this, from the standing timber fairly quickly this year, just because that moisture isn't real deep.
Absolutely. Good information.
In line with that, what would be some of the tools that you would use in order to, in anticipation of multiple lightning strikes? Because that's what you're even anticipating. You're just looking for, looking forward to a lightning here. What are some of the tools that you can implement to try and to combat? It just sounds like you guys are probably going to get stretched real thin if you're running around trying to put out lightning strikes.
So there's a number of different, and these guys can definitely expand upon this, but a number of different layers and approaches that we go as the season progresses. And so with that said, one thing I'll back up and say is that, and was just pointed out to you, so far nationally, the season's been pretty quiet, southwest relatively speaking. Southwest US has been relatively quiet. So fortunately, we've got a lot of resources in the south, so that's a good thing right there. And I can tell you just as, when we're in a rough year, when it starts out with a bang, and as we go along, the team really is an absolute factor. And so, you know, we're already starting off better this year, having crews rested and ready to help out as we get deeper into the season. So at this point, we have lots of good deep budget so far. But kind of standard things we do as we go forward is we'll start to order resources in even without necessarily anticipating lightning. Like, as the ERCs go up and they reach certain severity levels, we'll be able to order resources in. And that's just standard procedure with all of the agencies. Be able to reach out across the United States to get, have those people here available. And then definitely, we can see lightning most of the time coming, even a week or more out, and we will start to order in additional resources anticipating those starts and trying to get ahead of that.
Is that just personnel or vehicles?
Everything. I mean, aircraft, personnel, vehicles, overhead. They might even, as, I mean, just kind of education error, anticipating large fire activity, something like that, they'll even stage overhead teams, they'll stage shower units, et cetera. The full, the full.
The one thing, though, that we cannot predict is human caused fires. So when we get surprised by a human caused fire, wrong place, wrong time, you know, resources are thin, things like that, that's what makes it difficult. We got Drew?
I can just give a quick update. So being around the fire management officer for Sheldon, Heart Mountain Refuge Complex for US Fire Service, so I don't have a whole lot. We're going to be staffing our two Type IV engines this summer, five days. So we will have seven-day coverage with at least one truck. We work closely with the rest of partnership, with the BLM especially, but also with the Forest Service to help each other out. I do have a spare engine, but I am going to be loaning it to our Mid-Columbia Refuge up in Tri-City area because they're down with one engine this year out of their three DTH, it went breakdown. And out of all the refuges in our region, they get the highest fire load in that Tri-City area and for various. So that spare truck, spare truck that I have loaned out to the Forest Service and BLM here when they needed, will probably be gone this summer, most of the summer. If I have any kind of emergency here, and we do, we did have to understand, I will get that truck back. I've already let the BLM DOs know this morning that that's going to be happening, but, you know, we get overwhelmed here and we need a spare engine, I can get that back. For the most part, we'll be staffing our two Type IVs, working with BLM and the Forest Service, helping staff trucks as we can with our personnel. They do the same for us, so, you know, business is normal for most parts for refuge. And I think Barry's got numbers for like our fuels accomplishment for a year or so. Other than that, unless you guys got questions for the refuge side of stuff, that's my update going into the fire season. I will say, I did take sage brush samples two weeks ago, and they were, like, fuel moistures are so high, I expect they're probably starting to come down. We've got eighty to ninety, ninety-five degrees out there on that Nevada stuff especially. I imagine by Mitchell Wy, the sage will probably be ready to burn. You know, the cheat grass is already curing out out there. It's purple and curing, especially in lower elevations and the western and southern aspects. But I'd say by July, the desert will probably be ready to go too, so as far as fire season.
So your resources, your two trucks, are they stationed here on Heart Mountain? Are they?
They're in Lakeview. They also will be out at Cargan, Sheldon, depending on where they have project work to do, or what, or we maybe kind of, lightning's predicted. So, you know, if they're predicting lightning at Sheldon, we'll send a truck out there to take her hard, or just run them out of town here, so they can respond to Forest Service, ODF, BLM ground as well. Whatever makes most sense, that'll help out the whole partnership. If that's all I got, unless you guys got any other questions.
Well Commissioners, I think I'll just give you, just to kind of give it full circle, I want to talk just a little bit about some of the fuels treatments that we did across Lake County and Clem County in South Central Oregon's Fire Management Partnership. And then I'll maybe just tie back to maybe some of the resources that we have here locally. So we got, I know we've got two new Commissioners, so it's good to hear, at least the first time, what we do have, things like that. I think it'll be beneficial, so. I want to start off with the BLM, Lakeview BLM. Over here on the Lake County side, they've done three thousand six hundred and seventeen acres of pile burning and six hundred and seven acres of juniper cutting. So some of that falls, burning, you might have saw this spring out of Dix Creek, and there's more out by Valley Falls out there, Clover Flat. But then there's also stuff out by Fort Eakel on the rim there. So a lot of really good hard work's been going on there, and it really looks nice. These guys did a good job of finding the right window to get some of that work done.
How many acres was that?
They burnt over thirty-six hundred acres. So when you do a pile, it's considered so many acres of tree. Fish and Wildlife are very. Moving on. Depends on who piles it, right? How big the juniper was. Moving on, Fish and Wildlife, they had twenty-seven hundred acres of burning, mostly up on Heart Mountain.
Yeah, all of it on Heart.
All on Heart Mountain. And they cut seventeen thousand and twenty-four acres so far.
Between Heart and Sheldon?
Yeah, correct. Yeah. So Sheldon's in Nevada, you know, mostly, but anyway, still, that's a really awesome number to be taking on that type of treatment. So they're putting a lot of good dollars to work there. Climb Falls resource area on the BLM side, they burnt two hundred and thirty-six acres and had seven hundred and thirty-eight acres of cutting. Again, just a lot of hard work. Some of that stuff over on the Climb side is in tougher areas, more behind homes, urban interface type areas that Flight Mountain, you know, the man is cut off, places like that would be right behind folks. And smoke is a big deal as far as getting those acres treated. Forest Service side for this fiscal year, last fall and this spring, between pile burning and under burning, Forest Service has done about twelve thousand acres. And that's about what we try to do. Fifteen thousand is a good year. But if you remember, last year, fire season went clear until November. And so we just had a hard time getting some of our pile burning going because we were still fighting fire pretty late in the year. Mechanical treatments on the forest are still ongoing. And for the new Commissioners, Fremont and Indian National Forest has led Region Six, which is Oregon and Washington, in fuels treatments for the last several years. So we're treating more acres than any other forest, even if it's a little less. We're kind of proud of that. We're working hard at it for a dry pine forest, you know, we're trying to do the best we can to make our forest more healthy. Got a lot of work ahead of us, but still, still is a good work being done for the manual department. Resource wise, I think I briefed you in the past, but we now have two hotshot crews in Skafunk. Lakeview veterans, Interagency Hotshot Crew stationed out of Climb Falls, in the Lakeview District BLM, the BLM. They're new this year, the first veterans hotshot crew in the United States. So that was a big achievement, and we're very proud of that. We also have white emo hotshots that also in Climb Falls. Of course, we have a tanker base over Climb Falls, we've got a leap, or a air attack plane over there since of Climb Falls. Between the BLM and the Forest Service, we have twenty-seven engines. Drew's two engines up there with Fish and Wildlife. Crater Lake has a couple engines, and ODF has nineteen? Nineteen. So we have over forty sub-engines here in South Central Oregon that we have used to the Golden Fighter fires. We've got two ten-person hand crews, one in Wy, one in Lakeview. We've got a helicopter crew that sits out here in Lakeview, they're with seventeen people, seventeen to nineteen people this summer. They're ready to go. They've been working back this weekend, they were busy working near different places like that. Little fire over there. So we've got quite a, we'll have a seaplane that'll be here in Lakeview tomorrow, and it'll be here stationed here for the summer. And we will potentially bring in one to two more seaplanes once that's done. Other than that, that's a pretty good lineup. And there's a lot of people ready to fight fire here in South Central Oregon. One of the things that I want to just briefly mention about, Forest Service has been looking at some of these fires this spring, where we've had good conditions, we've had some natural emissions with lightning. We've taken an opportunity or two to make those fires bigger, to make resource, to improve resource benefits of landscape. One of them is over by, off the Thirty-fourth, if you're familiar with where Dairy Creek is, follow that up the hill towards Wy, up on top of the ridge. We had a lightning strike over there, was found on Saturday. It also happened to be in the unit that we planned to burn this fall. We took advantage of that. We took a quarter acre fire, turned it into a hundred and seven acres, according to that. We had, we had agencies from, I believe, Fish and Wildlife, ODF, Forest Service, BLM, all out there on that fire. They got it done within about an evening and mopped it up on Sunday and then continue to monitor it as we speak. It's just one small example of where we're trying to make a difference because right now, we have lots of resources within the right location. We have, we have a lot of the right things in place that we can make that happen.
So for that to trigger, whoever makes that call, it has to be a plan prescribed for an area, and then somebody's able to just make that call and?
It doesn't have to be a plan prescribed for an area, but it just be that much easier to implement.
Okay, so I, I think that's really interesting way that you're able to take advantage of that. It's unusual for agencies to still make that quick call a lot of times.
So it takes coordination. You know, given the communication with Oregon Department of Forestry, it was right next to private property. You know, we made sure that we got that stopped, that we weren't coming on the private property. And then when we do a treatment like that next to private property, it'll secure that forest wildfire absolutely here on in the future. Two point three billion acres on the Fremont and Indian National Forest, a hundred and seven acres to the old haystack, but.
It's a start.
We're learning and we're trying to get better at it. We're really doing some hard work, firefighters more than we will, and we're all working together to try to do the right thing.
I think it's worth saying, you asked, you said a quick call. We're working on that decision for that fire months in advance. Lots and lots of discussions and lots of calculating, lots of figuring. And then as we get up in a month and a week and the days before, we're, does it look good? Does it look good? Does it look good? It is not a, you know, getting on the scene and making a decision in ten or fifteen minutes, absolutely not. We've been looking hard at that, and that's what we've had, what we've figured out that we've had to do, is we have to do a lot of front-end stuff to make that work as opposed to, like you, you know, kind of alluding to, you know, making a decision that might take a couple hours or something like that. We're just not set up that way. We have to do a lot of front-end stuff.
So how do you handle, and thank you for that clarification, how do you handle the citizens that don't understand what you're doing? Do you have a press release whenever that happens? Do you guys get some information out right away of what's going on? You have to get in and date with a lot of calls.
We do. And we brought Jennifer Craig's along. She's going to be our prevention slash fire information officer for the summer, and she's going to help us out. We sent out press releases for the dairy fire, went out over the weekend with special emphasis talking about what we're doing, why we're doing it, you know, things like that. And we've had very minimal response. So we do the press release, we also put it on social media, we've got over eight thousand followers now on our Facebook page, you know, so we get that word out pretty fast. People like to know where the smoke's coming from, what's going on. But so far, we try to be very timely in how we get that information out so that people know right away if they do that.
Very good.
That's the one thing that I think's made a huge difference from the very point dates to now is the information factor. And just like with the Watson Creek, you guys were just pouring out the information on this Skafunk thing, and it's been awesome. on this Skopum thing, and it's been awesome. I, you know, I'm one of the followers on that deal, and you can get all that information. It's very good information, the people can see exactly what's going on, and, you know, there's not all this.
Drama.
Drama. People aren't making stuff up in their own mind and then spreading it around, and so it makes a big difference. To keep that information out there, it's a big benefit to everybody. And I really commend you guys for doing that, because that's a big deal, and I'm glad to have you doing that. Another thing with this Skopum, before I forget, you know, I never got a chance to publicly say anything, but you guys really stepped up for us when we had our flood here in town. And when we went down to your guys' headquarters, that's when everything started melding together. I just wanted to publicly thank you guys for helping us with that. And because once we went down there and you guys do what you do, that really helped. So I wanted to thank you guys for that.
A lot of particular mission, you know, we emphasize to our folks, please don't take it over, but show them what the incident command system is about, provide the infrastructure and the help. Obviously, we provided the resources out there doing some work too, but we try to involve as many of the county agencies as possible, so everybody can learn.
So, yeah, it was, you guys did it perfect, so it was awesome.
Like our agency administrators, the Forbes, still love it for a lot of us, so appreciate that. Back to fire.
Sorry, Barry.
Yeah.
I just didn't. I didn't have to.
Well, that's fair. So all in all, I think we're ready to go, season.
So when you mentioned your resources, you didn't, you mentioned the heli-tac crew, are you gonna have other helicopters here for, as a resource? You said one seat plane, you have ability to get two others possibly.
Yeah. So Lakeview burns, they all, we all have seat planes, we have one each on day as well, ODF does. You know, any of this eastern Oregon area, if we get a fire, we provide some seat planes and let them do their thing. And then if we get a fire back here in our area, they all come to us.
So can they explain that plane? Because I really don't.
So a seat is a single-engine air tanker, has about 900 gallons of retardant that you can put on.
So those are fire fireworks?
Yeah. Crop duster. They're crop duster, basically.
Yeah.
Big one. So anyway, they're funded by the BLM, and they're a great resource, especially on the desert, especially where you get down low. And they can really help out when you've got an initial type fire that's trying to blow up. And they can really paint that fire in pretty fast, if you've got retardant teams. Which reminds me, we also have a retard tank there sitting at Paisley. That has helped us out in the past with Watson Creek, Anna Fire, and different things like that. So we continue to have that police going on at Paisley Airport, as well as Lake County And, you know, we always have, we always have the ability for the larger tankers, you've got Clamath Falls, you've got Redmond, you've got LaGrand, you've got Moses Lake in Washington, you've got Reading, Boise, Metford, wherever the need is, those places can be, they're, we just get a plane from Boise in 20 minutes, you know, so.
So and your plane is stationed in one of your Lake County?
No, I'm a larger tanker. Our airport isn't, isn't qualified for that.
That's what I wanted to check on.
Yeah, so it's Clamath Falls committed for the local ones there.
That's why I'm looking at all longer on the.
Send the master plan.
We do have plans in the future to approve the airport out there as far as our seat base. We're looking forward to that. I think you got that later on the agenda, and we can talk about that later. There's, there's plans to make some infrastructure improvements out there. We'll only have fire program for the future.
Have any other presentations, anybody else?
I'm probably giving you an update for you.
All right. Awesome.
So Barry touched on a little bit, we got 18 or 19 engines between Clamath and Lake County. Out of the Lake unit here, we got seven engines. It'd be three here in Lakeview, two in Silver Lake, and then two out in Black. We also have a dozer tender combination here in Lakeview. There's one also in Clamath Falls, plus we have a dozer on the low buoy in Clamath Falls in addition to that. We'll have our, call it Type III helicopter, Long Ranger, with a small heli-tac crew on it in Clamath Falls, with a Type II helicopter, so a little bit larger, like a Huey. That's a difference in that. Helicopter, that'll be stationed in Clamath Falls as well, along with the detection fixed wing aircraft will be there. Also, in the last couple of years, we've been working on detection cameras. We have currently a detection camera set up on Chase lookout over out of Clamath and Hogback. And now that the snow is off the hills, we're gonna be progressing, hopefully in the next month or so, have a lookout for detection camera on Yanix and then also Grizzly Peak. That's gonna kind of be the main backbone for the system to get all that information to Clamath Falls, where the detection center will be, and then we'll start branching out from there, and then Drake's, Drake's Peak is a priority for all of us, and then try to work north, some of the teams as that. Department of Forestry wise, the state.
So back to camera. Can you explain how those cameras work?
I'll try.
You'll try.
So the camera rotates around, takes images as it goes around, and it all gets shipped to Clamath Falls. Basically, anybody with a log on can go and look at the latest image for that camera. But in Clamath Falls is where the computer with the software is, and that software, the company's Forest Watch, if it detects a smoke, it will essentially sound an alarm, pinpoint that, and that's the software and the license part of it. And then somebody that's maybe also a dispatcher or doing something else there, the tank, there's three folks in Clamath Falls that rotate through, watching the monitors and cameras, and verifying those alarms. Whoever's sitting there at the time will verify that it's a fire.